Ryan, could you do our pledge?
Sure.
And John, could you do that? Well, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First thing to order is have the flag of the police stand and the hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to live in the country where we can choose and vote through the things that are in the center of the community. If we ask that you want to vote, there's plenty of conditions about how you deal with the guidance and these things according to your will, what's in the best interest of the community. That's just a prayer.
First, I'd like to have our secretary at low call, my information.
Ryan, for our third here.
Jim Day.
Here.
Scott Monahan.
Here.
Sean Humphrey.
Yeah.
Therefore.
Here.
And therefore, John Fisher.
Here.
Jeff Satt.
Here.
This is Brad Shelton.
He's here.
They're supposed to interview somebody that's fourteen.
Yeah.
They're, they're state producers interviewing or local?
No, they're local, I think. I think they've got, you can't think that they're not.
Yeah, on the next two weeks.
So that's in the process. Minutes as I've been sent out? Are there any additions or corrections?
There was a... We didn't have the form last time.
Correct.
I haven't recorded and we didn't send out. I don't, I'm not sure if we sent them out or not. We only had four people here last time. So I had Beth going to send them out again today. We didn't know if we'd sent them out or not. If you'd like, I'll review if, uh...
P. Wood.
Public D was public order, seven, five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And the pledge. Sorry, I didn't say it. This is my request. The Congress of Cypher's to roll call the commission, the calling of the present day floor, time five, number three, John Fisher, Sean Humphrey. Apps of numbers too many, Scott Monahan, and therefore Jeff Satt, Brad Shelton. He was on from the office, he was on the campus, he was on the campus. The Congress of Cypher's, Travis Elliott, Carrie Keller Steele, Mike Screen. Carrie Keller Steele, both members of agricultural issues on the local ordinance. She now will be subcommittee discussing the progress of the matter after we have agricultural subordinated ordinance. There was not ready for clarification. She's been unable to develop maps to reflect the impact on residents and has been unable to assess her. She will attempt to get this later. The issue of non-conforming use was raised. That's when its own area became a property that is not a form to the zone. At what point, i.e. sale, reconstruction, remodel, et cetera, will be held to the existing zoning standards? Carrie Keller Steele stated that she has advised the subcommittee to be thinking about future ownership and non-conforming uses. She also discussed point system variables that will be used in proposed ordinance, rather than strict setbacks, et cetera. With a big note form, the Washington County Plan Commission, no official business was conducted, and the meeting was adjourned.
Okay, if we need to, uh, work with, how do we, do we approve that? Or are past minutes that we had in March or not approved?
Correct.
To.
My recommendation would be to go ahead and vote on these. I did review the, um, rules and procedures. And it doesn't speak to whether or not we do minutes when there's not a form. We know that no official business can be conducted. But we went ahead and took minutes and I recommend those here go ahead and vote whether to approve or revise the minutes as of right.
Okay.
We'll make the motion to approve the minutes. For April.
For April.
I'll say.
And we've got the motion and now the second to approve the minutes for April 2nd. Since there wasn't a form, there was no business basically taken, so they just were recording the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Was that all four?
Yeah. Okay.
Now, we still have the issue of the March minutes.
Yes. March minutes. Do you have any other thought?
Oh, I'm sure you do. Yes, well.
I think this...
There's no person out for review. Probably six weeks ago.
You don't need to read them, or you want to read them, or do we want...
Do we need to read them if they were...
Okay, anybody read them? Do you want to vote on that? They have the motion to vote on the minutes that were sent out.
I'll move if there's two minutes.
Therefore, as many motions as I have, second. Jim Day makes second. See no discussion, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor of approving the, uh, March, uh, minutes, uh, signified by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say aye. Motion, Carrie. Thank you very much. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the current, uh, May 7th meeting of the Washington County Plan Commission. Everyone who appears before the Plan Commission is entitled to a legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone present who wants, wants to will be given a chance to speak. We will ask that when you are called upon to speak, that you will state your name and address on the record. Thank you. Okay, first order of business on our agenda. Then there's committee reports. Subdivision or, uh, could you, uh, Jeff talk about if Carrie was able to get a hold of you?
She did not. If she got in touch with my office, I'm not aware of it. She may have reached my office about maps, and I might not know.
All right. Tom, do you know if we got all of the paperwork that we needed for her to have authority to get in there and stuff?
I did.
Okay, John, that's another thing.
I called her and I, or if I called her or emailed her to confirm that she did. The commissioner has raised that issue.
I think that she has had surgery or doing something with a medical issue. That's the reason she's not here. She should be present for us for June.
She said she must.
Yeah. Okay. Hey, I think we're on subdivision. Jeff?
Oh, uh, no.
Okay. We did have me an article in front of me, the middle of the month, uh, that we discussed the land use. We concentrated on AFOs, CFOs, and CAFOs. Does anybody that was present want to report on that or that discussion? Well, we discussed land use. We were discussing, discussing, uh, AFOs, CFOs, and CAFOs. Bunch of the discussion dealt some with numbers, but I guess the primary thing is, is we had a whole list of what, uh, what was conforming and non-conforming uses on agricultural land. And it was quite a significant list. We tried to scratch some things out and add other remarks in there. We are looking at a scoring system for setbacks. Trying to use a minimum setback for probably the most remote agricultural area as far as where to put. But, uh, some of the parameters will deal with density of population. You know, uh, there's different scoring systems. Somebody wants to put a site or look at a site to put a confined feeding operation or a feed classified as AFO, which is an animal feeding operation. I'll explain that later. Is that they can do a lot of their work ahead of time and see if it's a good site. And we've got a minimum level that we look at and then to try to achieve a certain amount of points before it has to come in for variance or some special reason that they have to come to the Plan Commission to ask for an exception to that process. Want to go back to explaining. With AFOs, we are working with numbers to try to do proper site location for, uh, animal operations. Right now, I U M has a threshold where there's a permit process for, um, confined feeding operations. And they have certain parameters and certain setbacks and certain guidelines. But if they are underneath those, uh, thresholds and they're not regulated and nobody really does, uh, has any guidance or regulation over unless they have a problem, you know, a water quality problem. And that seems to be what's highlighted in Washington County right now, the most controversial. So we're trying to adjust our numbers to go through the process for this site scoring with lower numbers and more, uh, heightened as far as their, um, permit process. Is this kind of correct with the people that was involved? I feel like this is a very, very fair, uh, direction to go, not only for the, uh, landowner that's wanting to put it up in operation, but also to the residents around it. Because, uh, basically, if you're in a higher density, um, population area, your setbacks are going to be perfect away. And we've had discussion of reverse setbacks. There's a little bit of controversy, but you know, if, if the setbacks are set up for confined feeding operations, stay a certain distance away from an animal, uh, from the residents, then why isn't it equally important for the, uh, the residents to be located in that same manner? I mean, some people that's got a smaller piece of property sees that as a restrictive, a kind of a restricted, uh, use of their land. But, you know, realistically, we're trying to be equal, you know, to all parties. So whether it's a health issue or if it's nuisance or noise or if it's a smell, I mean, I don't see how you differentiate, you know, a different setback because residents, now they can ask for a variance, it doesn't, right? They, yeah. You know, they're still...
But I was about to say, we'd be discussing maybe instead.
Yeah.
Somebody can say, oh yeah, I don't care if it smells, I don't care about odor, it will probably be a problem.
Yeah, I'm almost...
What would be the disadvantage to the poultry operation, uh, in the public, directors and charles? If somebody who puts about two hundred feet come near, jerk the yards with noise and things that they're doing, that, I'm not checking if I...
I think it would, it's not...
That's, that'd be the reason I would think you have to have a setback to check your operation, something else, you know, that would be a fear.
Because like, oystics have actually high levels because of oystics.
I have a kind of struggle. I, you know, make sense of why, because that's, that's the long reason why I have to be able to affect it. And no one's ever kept up with it, right? Because if you do that, it's difficult to...
I don't know about chickens. I don't know if chickens can do that. Um, mostly chickens, they usually should have a solid side wall or the turkeys are not, and they let, they let her into the ground.
You know, of course, now get ready, you would have, have the permission of, uh...
Correct.
So when you get to you, what do you have to do? Not with these people. And by supplying to the days, by providing to the days, they would be waiting a lot.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're trying to tell them.
But you would have to, like, you know, we would just be, we had to pay that, you know, you have something, you have, 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 you[1296.24]
You know, I'll just, this, this is a whole list, you know, there's seventy-five things in here as far as permitted uses on agriculture.
Mm-hmm.
On this, and then we had, we added to it a whole criteria of special exceptions. I'll just read off some special exceptions, you know, to agriculture. Water treatment plants, sewage disposal, major utility stations and plants, parks for general recreation, other parks, retirement homes and orphanages, room and boarding houses, residential hotels, hotels, tours, courts, motels, nature exhibits, resorts, other cultural entertainment, recreational, manure digesters, airfields, ethanol production plant, biodecent production plant, waste the energy converters, and any new technology using agricultural byproducts, and commercial grain elevators.
This is all considered agricultural use?
They're called, they're special exceptions.
That can be in agriculture.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Why would you necessarily just ask, why would you want a special exception for a retirement home?
People like to live out in country, they're old age. I don't know.
I think that's, I mean, just an awful tough comment, I think that was a little questionable.
What's the source of that with this? It come, this is a Washington, I think this was pulled through Rush. This is one of Rush's documents that he uses as a scoring system.
That might have been something that was important, it's something in that county, but it doesn't necessarily have to be something that we would include in any kind of risk. We all think that's, I don't know.
So, do you have anything to add, you were there?
That's how I thought was the permitted uses, that these are all acceptable in recreating the agricultural, and the special exceptions would come before the VZA or the zoning. Isn't that how that works?
Yeah, it was, and the special exceptions would have to come in, asked to be put in, there wouldn't be.
And are those just examples of special exceptions?
Well, this is actually pulled out, you know, in the criteria.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, they, it was put in there, but I understand your comment.
Yeah, there may be things that we would want to add to that list.
Well, I think she's thinking a lot about utilities, water, you know, getting to these, you know, you're talking about a retirement, retirement homes or some big retirement park, I mean, you're talking sewage and, you know, everything to be considered about, so I think that's why that's a special exception to, not that it's just gonna go get put in, but that's something to be considered.
Yeah, there you got that.
Well, I think too, also, you know, anything could be an exception, anybody could, could, you know, could ask her.
No, we're down to a list.
You know, I mean, the list is okay, but I think, I think we're working to our own.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to be just a little less, I think, I think personally, exactly what's that saying?
Less strict.
And, and just less, you know, you know, when we have, we need to make, you know, just like, you know, it needs to be open to, you know, somebody lives out in country, for example, way out, you know, in agri, totally agricultural type place, and, you know, farmers, tough for them because they don't do, for example, and they wanna, for them people's practice farms and their bucks, they have a big buck. You know, that would be a totally different.
Yeah, that's listed in here, that's forbidden.
That's the permitted uses, that wouldn't need to go in the whole.
Yeah.
He's saying there's seventy things that you would not need to go for anyone. You have these things done out of your home, or you have to start some small business.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be out.
There's several, there's several of those.
Yeah, people should just be able to do that.
But anyway, we had, we moved in there, the point system, as we looked at it, you know, and we had had some different examples. Of course, we gotta have a threshold as far as whether these points are acceptable for a good site location, and we gotta go through those numbers and that's all. We haven't set up. But I, I tell you what, as you go through it and kinda work through the process, this scoring system actually makes a lot of sense, you know, because whenever you got this minimum setback, and as you work with densities, of course, you have to work with bare ground, which is nobody living. You know, you've got these early parts of, you know, undeveloped land that's already in the sub-division.
That'll make it really easy for people to, you know, while the, the density has to be important, the population base, and the, the setback overlap has to be another area of, 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 that would be this part, if those two things pass either, that, that would be the kind of people that would be really easy for them to do this sort of thing. And that's where we, you know, that's how we want this to work, we want it to be really easy for people to, you know, to encourage people to do it, where it's, you know.
Thank God, it's got a good point, the point system is going to need to take into consideration who was there first.
Yeah, I also, you know, there's, like scoring, if they're.
Whether it's occupied or not.
If their residence is on the same property as where they're putting, it probably, it really shoots the points out. It, that way you don't have an absentee owner, they've got three or four buildings and they don't live. And so, if they've got, if their residence, if their residence is there, it really shoots the, you know. There, there's some good things, I mean, I, you know, it's not gonna be a perfect document that will come out and be, you know, Jasmine's, but I think the, the point system allows people a lot of latitude to, you know, pursue really proper site location.
Sure, what can you say about the point system?
I mean, you're actually in the business of, you know, animal feeders. You know, as a, as a person, you actually know that they're not, like, what is it? Okay. But you're stuck, but I mean.
I, I think that I have an awesome big operation for being here.
Yeah. So you think it would not be, uh, out of drive to make the, the, the threshold rolling and stuff like that?
Um, the reason why I don't look to that thing is because it's a big project, and I think that site location is very important. And I think it's fair.
Committee, do you think that's, at this time, that I can share some of those numbers that may be out there right now?
And that, one other thing I wish to mention was that army schools and stuff is going out here in county, so we make sure we stay away, so far away from these schools, because there's so many of them, smaller schools around here now that used not to be.
Now, we did have discussion that we were looking at public schools as far as, as you do. We've just crossed up with a lot of different schools, you know, and a lot of participations, so we were looking at public schools.
One mile, one mile. There was a publicly funded.
State funded.
State, government funded.
Yeah. All right, here's, uh, two hundred and fifty dairy cow matured, three hundred and fifty veal calves, three hundred and fifty cattle, the, uh, steers, wolves, calf, pairs, eight hundred and fifty swine, each weighing fifty-five pounds or more, three hundred and thirty swine, each weighing less than fifty-five pounds, a hundred and seventy horses, thirty-three hundred sheep or lambs, fifteen thousand turkeys, ten thousand laying hens, forty-one thousand chickens, forty-seven thousand laying hens, ten thousand ducks, and seventeen hundred ducks, if there was a liquid manure handling system. Well.
Is that based on the?
Yeah, that's manure. Because IDM's regulation, I always thought, and I've been in this industry a long time, and I've actually been in the process of developing the, the, uh, regulations and the permit process, and I always thought those figures that were caught up were scientific figures. They're not. They found out that they're not at all. So the way we based it off is what, each one of the exam units actually produce the manure, and that's how we get them. So some of these thresholds, which it's six hundred swine for permit process, and there we have eight fifty. The reason ours is more because we calculated everything on what the animal produces in manure.
It's still based on.
Correct, it's still per head based, but that's how we come up with those numbers. Well, it is a scientific way and a calculated way, where the permit process found out there is a.
You're talking about three hundred and fifty of these cows, are you talking about in a confined, feline situation, or are you talking about cows?
No, they would have to be confined where their spits was, or, what, is it six months, I think, is the, that's their spits. You know, that, that's not gonna entail like a cow calf operation, pasture, you know, of that type. That would probably be more like a non-lying feeding system where they're. Yeah.
Fiezer, or dairy, big dairy, or something like that, and they had cows in, you know, confined.
That's what's gonna trip that.
Yeah, you feel like, you could say three hundred thousand chickens?
I think you just range it, dairy and beef.
Other than laying hens.
Other than laying.
Right.
See, the top of your, uh, mature dairy cows.
One single, that's a five to be by five hundred, or seven, thirty-three thousand.
Being a, a special.
That's not a huge operation.
Yeah, it's a core competition, everyone's gonna get that.
Whatever.
I think it's fifty, it's two thousand, thirty, it's about two farms.
Yeah.
So the two fifties only for the dairy.
So you may have a question on that then, Adam?
Well, that would just, just making a.
Well, what we're trying to do, we're trying to catch enough that we give proper site locations.
Right, right.
That's the reason, that's the reason we're lowering, lowering the numbers.
But you equated the following, correct?
Correct.
What is that basis of the value?
That is, well, there is actually a, a statistical table of manure load per area.
I would hate to be the one to have to figure out.
Oh, but that's.
Excuse me, just, just a question, in a twenty-four hour period?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
Uh, I would much rather deal with one horse generating manure than four hundred ducks generating manure. But is that the same?
Maybe quit one.
Yeah.
One might be a little more potent than the other.
Yeah. But it, well, they've usually got PhDs, it's piled higher and deeper.
Oh, I got you.
Um, hmm, I don't remember, I don't remember, forty, we had forty-one thousand?
That's it?
Yeah.
That seems like an awful lot.
It's a house.
It's just not, no.
It's, it's one and a half, place in a house, well, we're not even quite, it's a little over.
Just a little over one.
But you could put in one full-size chicken house.
You could put in one full-size.
I don't have, I don't have the pitch of a few home operations, of course. And is anybody really, really interested in one house?
Environmental regs, like.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think many would actually do that.
Yeah, most operations are going to be two to three.
Two to three, yeah.
But one is still, there's people that do those.
Um, but before you get to a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah.
That's like.
Nobody's ever.
It's all ground.
Well, you know, as, as we go through there, I mean, as far as the clean, clean record, and some of the criteria on that, you got ten points for clean record, water conservation in farms, twenty-five points, existing land use, till, ten, wood, twenty, pasture, thirty-five, and section density, we got zero to five, we got fifty points, six to ten, and I think that hints that we want a.
Quarter pile, I think that's the way that was developed.
But we actually have maps that's got the density, you know, to work with. But as, as it, more dense, it gets fifty plus, and that four mile, you get.
That's a half mile.
Half mile?
You get zero points.
I would get zero points.
Sorry. You know, the thing about it, we talked about the setbacks in some existing facilities, I've got some existing facilities back there at West Washington School that wouldn't get these considerations about setbacks in school, it wouldn't be, I mean, it couldn't be put to, so, you know, it's, you take a look at the existing units where they're at, and stuff, this is gonna have an impact where these sites are gonna be located. And separation from the house and public facility and church, at least two hundred and fifty, uh, feet more than required by standard, which is your baseline, they'll give you forty points, five hundred feet, so if you move back sixty points, eighty points for seven fifty thousand.
How many points you gotta have to do it?
Well, that's, you know, in, in order to apply for a special exception, three fifty out of nine hundred and ninety points, to receive a permit without special exception, five hundred points, as we're gonna think of that. So that's kind of where the guide is.
They've done, uh, which, that, that, how many she was, I think she took those numbers.
Rush County?
Yeah, it's still kind of a rush, we can implement our own numbers, but it kinda gives you an idea, you know, what's, what's it. And then it's got odor abatement, you got tier one, which says twenty points for the first method, five points for each additional method, up to a maximum of forty points, so if you've got a new technology for abatement on, on, uh, you know, to deal with odor, then you can get additional points. So it leaves one of the things in there for technology to track turnarounds, thirty points. Here's a, an IDM or EPA violation, minus a hundred and fifty.
You know, we need to take the last two or three, like beating operations that go in, plug our numbers in.
And see what they score.
And see what those scores are.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And see if we're in more.
Yeah, that would be an interesting.
So anyway, I'll go pass that around for you to look at, and then, so, but that was some of the things that we kinda worked on.
What is this, so committee's next meeting?
June.
June.
Or mid, it's getting late.
Yeah, goes for operations and stuff, it's got a, kind of a medical lead on it.
Do you have a date in June yet?
No.
No, I do not. We didn't set that date.
I'll try not to be sick next time. It's not going anywhere, but I'll try.
Not going anywhere.
Some of these might be, uh, time-specific, for example, the IDM, EPA violation or county violation in the past twelve months, in the past twenty years, what, what's going to trigger that? Minus a hundred and fifty, or what will release the jersey?
I've seen this number before, I mean, what I've seen is five years.
Five years.
Yeah, five years, I'll make it through to that though. But I have seen that in other counties in five years.
It's not something you need to be doing every day, so.
No, I don't, but to, to say something is in perpetuity.
Right, it needs to have the limitation.
Now, I know that some counties actually look at, they have more than three violations in a five-year period. No need to apply.
Yeah.
But I, I will caution you on what IDM calls a violation, especially if they've got a permit. Because it could be paperwork, or it could be a gutter on that, or it could be a compost where they've moved. Manure piled out of town. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not maintenance or water quality, right? So I caution you on that.
We could always just, you said we're sorry.
Other water quality.
Yeah.
Because.
Why they want to move it?
The only thing, the, the only problem that you'll have in there is when IDM puts it in their books for their records, they don't differentiate what the violation is. A violation is just classified violation, it was not classified as water quality violation. Well.
I have a virtual file cabinet, you can go on there, you can see every document that's scanned, and then you can look at it and there's a violation now.
Do you think that's valid or reasonable or even?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You can go into Washington County, you can see everything.
No, I mean to have a thing for violations.
Um, I do, but I think it needs to be investigated, I don't think it's a hundred and fifty question, I'm not sure.
Regardless, yeah.
Yeah, no worries.
Regardless, yeah, right, that's, you know, that's why we actually, we're so patient.
Okay. Uh. Committee, any other comments?
Just the home stand, I'm assuming that is if the person doing the operation is living on that location, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. Because we're having, you know, some of the controversy is, is that, well, they're not gonna live, like, they're just gonna pillage, and they're gonna live someplace else. Well, if they actually live there.
Home stays down there about two thirty AM?
Yeah.
Hundred points.
Hundred points. Yeah.
That market will tell me that they're pretty quick.
Yeah.
I don't think that life is better than that.
They do, they say they do that, just my opinion.
What about the point system, more determining whether you're gonna get four or even seven, I'm a little concerned. We really have a lot to prove.
You don't have enough points, that's where it pushes you back for it.
Yeah, you have to exchange your, you have to exchange your setbacks with them, and that to gain the points. Especially if you're in a high density, and like Shawna was talking about, she said with her side location, she probably wouldn't get the points. That doesn't keep her from not killing. If she can gain enough and enough points, and the other criteria is, you just kill them. You know, and some of these points move up, you know, because it's a setback distance, and Shawna told me that. Physically, or her proposition.
So are we starting off at four hundred feet and the worst? How, how are we doing that, or where, where do we start?
Okay, let me, since I was involved, let me say my understanding, see if that's right. Is it, there is no starting point, because I have a simple question, but what it is, is you have to reach a certain minimum number of points to be granted. And there are ranges for various setbacks, and ranges of points for a whole host of factors that we're talking about. And you've got some combinations that meets the minimum requirement, it's a threshold, so there is no starting points for setbacks, but different ranges of setback from various things have different points allotted to them.
So five.
So untrue, but we started with a animal on the four.
Okay, I did come back when I said, but.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking we started with four hundred.
It's started with, and that's the reason it says required by standards, the standard's pulled up, then if you, two hundred and fifty feet on which is six fifty, you gain four points.
I got you. You can, it doesn't mean you have to start at four hundred. You can start at any number over four hundred, it just gains you more points. And I see what you're asking. Exactly, you can't do less than four. Which that's, that's four hundred feet and real far. So that's, I, I wouldn't go, well, I mean, that's not. You're gonna find, most people have to probably go further to get.
Yeah, if there's not property, that's why.
Yeah, there's people, if there's people actually there, you're gonna have to go further to get the penalty to make the work. Because you're gonna have overlapping, uh, you know, you're gonna have overlapping setbacks and all kinds of stuff that's gonna touch your points way back, and we're just gonna have to move through this, so I think it might work fine, we just need to play it out a little bit.
Well, if they challenge you with numbers off the.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Agree.
With some, with some recent, uh, operations would be a very educational for everybody to see how that kind of works out.
I did the point system online before I actually built, and then I did the point system after I built, and my, my, it's increased so much. After it was built, I could realize all the things that I'd actually do, so my concern with this is that people have a lot of, you know, they're gonna say, oh, I'm gonna do these different tier things, I'm going to do all of this, but who's gonna regulate it? Who's gonna go out and make sure they do? My concern was, you know, good intentions, you know, but not actually following through, so I thought, that's my, take the land the way it is right now, and try and base the site scoring around what's there right now, you know, as much as possible before dealing into these other things that are clear intentions. Because a lot of times people get too busy and don't do it.
Well, I think maybe like, if you're ever, for example, somebody that's not already in the business, you have to exclude them, I mean, they say, well, I'm gonna incorporate this point, well, you know, how do you do that? To me, they're gonna be ineligible for those points either way. Now, if they already have two houses over here, and they're incorporating them here, and to me, they're gonna be eligible for it. Now, if they already have two houses over here, and they're incorporating them here, uh, to me, they're going to be eligible for it. Me, I have to use a little common sense, I think. You know, somebody that's coming out here that, like you said, has good intentions, you know, they find out, my God, I had to work for him for hours a day, you know, and.
I don't want to keep Travis too busy.
Yeah, it it would be easier to make the system work, to me, than than to try to use punitive actions to break people over the line.
So do you think that maybe when we go into the manure application with injection incorporated within twenty-four hours, it might not work?
That's already something that they would be, you know, that's a good intention they're going to do later, you know, that's not something they're going to do right now. That's great if that's the plan and that's what they're going to do, but who's going to go out and check on it?
And the tree, any of the buttons, you know, the trees, they're.
I think they're doing.
Anything like that too?
It's not really, it ought to be scored on what's there and what's around there, and.
Okay, I think for every tree line on every side, they get so many points, you know, or.
I mean, if somebody wanted to put funds in escrow or something, if they were desperate for points, and and they wanted to put funds in escrow that would cover those improvements, that might be something we could consider.
That's why they have construction bonds, and when you buy, you get bonded, so that you don't perform, it's a performance bond, and you don't do it, you know, you the bond can get paid to have it done, and you have the bond to give it to you. You know about.
This is going to be the first stop, and they're going to be doing their site scoring, they're not going to be closing their loan for six months.
That all gets really.
There's going to be too much to monitor.
Yeah, I I think scoring in on what's actually already there, and what they've got to work with is probably the the most proactive way to do it. Because anything else, anything else you consider for them being able to do other things to make it work, they're going to have to actually do it unless you don't act, unless they do, use a slip, they have to do it first.
But we have to approve these.
And tree lines and.
Oh, we'll have to, well, if we use this point system, then we're going to have to see the specs and verify.
Let's look at this way then, what about, like Shawna said, if they have those tree line, for example, if it's, if it is planted at the time of inspection, you you know, you're eligible for those points. Same way with manure application, if you've got an applicator sitting there that you're going to use, that that we could inspect, you're eligible for those points. If you don't have an applicator, then how can we assume you're going to not do it? If you don't have those tree lines planted, you know, how can you have those points, because we don't know if you're going to plant them.
I agree, it has to be there. If it's not there, it doesn't exist. Otherwise, it's just all nonsense.
But I think that would be the simplest way to approach it.
True. Any other thoughts, comments? Committee?
It's fun, it's so fun.
Well, you know, actually, our discussions, and I feel like I energized with this point system, I can see how this thing could actually work and churn and and work through the process.
I think we need to modify that list a little bit, you know, to what this kind of works for this county better. But I think it's totally doable thing, it would really be fair for anybody wanting to do it, and anybody around us.
Well, I made some, I made some notes, and I said that the score is what what is there, and not so much about best measure of practice, and what could be, if the tree line's there, you know, we can use it for scoring. If we're application, and we have other existing buildings, and showing those practices may have made, and you can use that for scoring.
Is the drive-in door storage facility?
Yeah, and I tell you, I, it's not in here, but I tell you what, that drive-in air facility is, should be a huge.
It should be a good point, but it has to be there.
I doubt very many of the.
I've got a reason.
Drive-in door.
It's a building that they basically put through the roof, so it doesn't sit outside you in that state. Because that's what makes it.
I mean, because even Steve Hurley had his transit head there, and he had to revamp that whole thing before he could even use it under an item.
Right.
Well, my good friend neighbor was supposed to have one, you know, as part of this expansion.
It's not there.
Right, there's a roof there now, after they do.
It's expensive, it's really expensive to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's good intentions, it's going to go right back to that good intentions thing.
The NRCS office will not do a cost share program for a manure storage building until the buildings are built. Most people want to go through the NRCS office, and do that, right, don't you think?
Yes.
You know, unless they're going to make their own concrete floor and walls, and then they're going to put, you know, a steel hoop, you know, steel, like stretch it. So it's it's all very expensive.
It is, it is a good practice, you know, and I wish that.
But I don't think we can give points on it if it's not there.
Right.
I guarantee those people will never build it if they get.
And the only way is, is by waiting, is if they're going to try to use it.
You don't ever fall down, no?
Yeah, I'll fall down the stairs too, I was watching that.
We're going to have to bring in metal protectors, is it bringing guns? But anyway, you know, if you were to use that, that would be a case for escrow until that building.
We could take that as a case by case basis.
Yeah.
It would have to be case by case.
Yeah, that would be one of those special exceptions, you know, where you know, again. Okay, any other, any other comments or anything I want to move on? Rhonda's got a presentation here at the end, she'd like to do it at the end of the meeting and stuff, so. Uh, we have an issue, now, if there's no other discussion, I want to move on with Fredericksburg's issue, it's kind of a the city town, Fredericksburg, has asked the commissioner, and it has to go across the uh plane commission to cease being a town. And there's a process to do that. One of them was to petition the citizens of Fredericksburg to close, and that failed. The other is that they explained, they helped me explain this a little bit to both Tom and John, because as you can remember, in fact, I'm just going to relate it.
Oh, I'm I.
It's you, Ellen.
Indiana Code in Title thirty-six sets forth a statutory procedure, and the citation, for those that are interested, is thirty-six dash five dash one point one. It's called dissolution of small towns. And it provides for two primary methods that a town can go about dissolving and becoming a part of the larger county. How they cease to exist as a separate state of town.
Excuse me, Tom, it's thirty-six dash five dash whatever it is in here?
No, I doubt it. Yeah, you may have paid me very much for not today.
But but it does deal with plane commissions.
No, the plane, this is primarily a, this is not a plane commission type issue, but the statute does require it to come before the plane commission for recommendations as a preliminary step, and you're giving me a hand on my, in my schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you cite the title article in chapter seventy?
Thirty-six dash five dash one point one.
Thank you.
That's a short section, or short chapter, it's about, you know, four pages, so. The one method is, they can get twenty-five percent of the registered voters of the town to sign a petition. And that was the original method selected, and several months ago, I'm going to say it was in twenty-ten, or maybe two thousand eleven.
Eleven, yes.
They did present the county commissioners with a petition. My office, then, we went to the clerk, Washington clerk's office to check, okay, and then there was, there were several signatures, and we checked to see how many of those were registered voters in the town of Fredericksburg. And it turns out only four of the many, you know, some, some of the small numbers were actually registered voters in the town of Fredericksburg, although there were several pages of people who signed this petition. So my uh recommendation would be, commissioner, was that this cannot be accepted, uh, in the shape of process. The other issue then was, the other method is, they, the town can pass a resolution or ordinance to dissolve by really elected officials. I recommended that they get a list of the registered voters and get twenty-five percent of the number to sign petition. Because I was under the impression, based on the conversation I had with one gentleman involved, that perhaps these people weren't actually really elected officials, but just kind of good-hearted volunteers that were stepping up to take over the town and try to do what needed to be done. That issue has not been fully resolved, but we did have a gentleman appear, and it represented the capacity of the last Washington County Commissioners meeting, who presented these to us, he is from the town of English, and has assisted the town of Fredericksburg along the way, and is very well versed in procedures required, and he did present, he signed and filed, both as an office of people who voted upon, held a meeting, voted upon this procedure. That is a more decided, maybe not so much an issue for the county commissioners to take up. But the commissioners acknowledged that they did file their office, which was accepted by the county clerk, which would presumably not be accepted if they were elected officials to, to do that, and do certain, in the capacities they have. I asked a gentleman, both a resolution and a ordinance, expressing their desire to dissolve. So that was filed with the Washington County Commissioners. And I accepted service of that on April fifth, and the statute says, uh, basically, this ultimately has to go to a public hearing for Washington County Commissioners. But prior to that, there needs to be a recommendation from the public commission, whether to, whether we think that should be approved or disapproved or be proposed for this decision. And um, there will be, of course, a public notice of public hearing. With that said, so right now, what are the processes, I've filed with the commissioners, the commissioners, they need, have referred it to the county commission, and I had sent it, I believe, to the president, or, you know, John Muster's aware of it, or at least notified, because I think I sent I guess everybody got my email outlining the procedures. And so tonight, I think we need to consider uh the reasons for the request. The impact it's going to have on the county, and the impact on the plane commission, and make a recommendation, create a recommendation, a recommendation. And I have drawn up two different pieces of paper, one saying approve, and one saying disapprove. And uh, tonight's date on it, assuming that we reach some kind of conclusions, I don't know. But there's, there's the issue, and I can tell you, uh, the reason for, the primary reason for the request is they simply don't have the money to continue functioning. They owe people money, they have not been able to, they've been several years without some financial assistance. They, I think they have some brain to, and uh, receive an income, and perhaps they need for a separate town has come to pass, right now, just because it seems to be of interest to the residents of the town to continue to actually run the office and carry out the duties responsibilities of elected officials, or they separate the small town. So that's a, may decide if they'd like to.
I'll just make one, I'll make a couple of comments, what I think. For one, if they, if they dissolve, then our governance as a plane commission will entail that tank. Correct. So we will, in some way, have an impact in their way we do look at their maintenance. And the other thing is, back on the end, the civil government in there is that the county will take over the ownership of the roads, the maintenance of those roads. And there's an issue of security lights and streetlights there on Fredericksburg, that I think this will probably be only talent to keep those streetlights on, that the county paid the utilities of those streetlights.
Well, if it's not a town, it's just a country road, they don't really want to.
There are, there are two, two sizable other unincorporated towns in Washington County. The town of Martinsburg is unincorporated, the town of Canton is unincorporated. So, but when it comes to maintenance of the roads, the county has to take care of those roads with regards to street lights in Canton or Martinsburg, I don't know if they have any.
I'm looking for in Canton. I'm pretty confident there are any in Canton, any lights that might be there are probably on the, that are clearly probably on.
Because they did talk about a utility building of the streetlights.
I don't mind describing them, I think.
I think so.
If it's no longer a town, it would be.
Right, that's what I'm pretty positive is, if it's no longer a town, and it's just a little house, a country road.
And it's still going to be called Fredericksburg, or is it going to be called something else?
And we're talking about the dissolution of the corporation, not the vacation of the plants. They're still going to have lot numbers, and still going to have.
He referred to as Fredericksburg, like, of surveillance records and so forth.
Long, long streets out there. There's also, there's some, there's also some land owned by the town of Fredericksburg that I think would, you know, become owned by County Washington. Uh, made in bags of kind of flood, and we got federal systems, and the system was supposed to bring it to the town, that gave those a man, a little bit of safety, plus flood on the off days. And some stipulations, I just noticed, we kind of came up a couple of years ago, we had this, for the last couple of years, we had a survival. Uh, or some students, it was, by the town of Fredericksburg, and there was apparently, it used to be a residence, there was a second tank buried on it, and someone from over here decided, well, we could have a second tank, and I can align, uh, which town's property. And they have it bad, and use that, that was the allegation. Ultimately, though, I think those properties would would become property of the town, or maybe of the county.
Would they, would deeds for those be signed by the town officials before the dissolution? Because once the dissolution takes effect, I think the officials go.
It seems to me like this would be recorded. These proceedings would be recorded, and perhaps in the recording process, much like the affidavit of survivorship, or affidavit of ownership, it would be a situation where, by virtue of the recording of this, of these proceedings, or the reporter's office, that any property owned by the town, any real property owned by the town of Fredericksburg would
Revert to the.
Revert to the, to the county, but I I don't, I can't answer, I don't know the answer to that.
Is there any purpose for the county to keep that ground, can we not just auction, can we just auction it off?
It has to be made, it has to be forever publicly held. That's the whole point, to receive the federal monies, they don't want private parties building on there, so it has to be held openly for public use.
Like a park.
Yeah.
Just bring your.
Bring your swim trunks, case.
The lane art too.
Get your swimmer all the way in there.
The decaying, the mining, the strings attached.
So.
So who's going to cut the grass and all that, I guess we're.
I guess we're still doing that. Well, what I understood, that you're already maintaining it anyway. You didn't know it, but the county highway department's already cutting the streets.
I don't know how the county could be held liable for something that they were not a party to in Congress.
I'll have to go back a couple of years to pull that, but I'm a little shocked to see the wording get also approved Washington County in the, in the documentation. Because this book that came, the subject tank issue came up. And we were kind of stunned that Washington County was actually included in the language from the federal government when they made a sign of documents. Now, whether we actually signed, I don't remember, but it was, it was interesting that they recognized the potential that a town could dissolve and the rights in urge of the county. And they won the allegations to urge of the county as well. So I don't know how else. Again, I can take a look at it. It's not something I can debate here, because I have that in front of me. And prefer not to, but I do remember that we were, this county was specifically mentioned in those documents.
It has to mean that you leave Davis, Frederick, Queens.
It's, it's a couple of lots. There's a couple of lots that, I, I don't know how many there were. I wasn't around then. I didn't even live here then, in the county. So whenever this happened, we received federal money to relocate some people. And part of the stipulation was for that to happen. We had to sign off that they weren't, say, these were going to be held as public properties. It would be held open to the public. It wouldn't allow people to use it for private benefits. There's a whole list of things that I, we know this, and I, kind of a commissioners meeting was kind of, is the regulations on these properties. So how many there are, I don't know. And I think that's something that before the public hearing, we're going to take a look at. Public hearing has to be held no less than sixty and no more than ninety days after the filing of the documents with the county executive, county commissioners. When I received those on April twenty-fifth, those were dated. And I would say probably would be deep to file with the county executive on me as the agent served, served on, on me. So I'm, I'm looking at sometime between June twenty-fourth and July twenty-fourth. There needs to be a public hearing somewhere. Assume that would be the first or second meeting of the county commissioners.
That's a public hearing.
The papers that were handed across mentioned the ending of the terms as twelve thirty-one eleven. Have they been extended past that time?
Yes, at the last commissioners meeting, the gentleman who, Mr. Burns, who was acting in a representative capacity for the town of Fredericksburg, appeared without the presence of any of the elected officials. And he had commented, and one of the two of you who helped me out who were there, that he was going to, if we didn't go along with it, he was just going to recommend that they resign. Just resign and, I mean, basically, no matter what, we're going to end up stuck with this regardless. So that, that was the threat, that he was not there. And, I mean, they were not there, he was. And his comment was, I said, look, settle down. From what I hear, this appears to be legitimate. You know, I've looked into the process, it needs to go to the county commission. The county commission has to make a recommendation to the county commissioners. We've, folks, we've been having problems with Fredericksburg as long as I've lived here, the last ten years. The county has gotten involved on multiple occasions in helping out there. They've not been able, when, when something needs to be done, there's not money in their budget to do it. So the county ends up doing it in many times. So I gotta feel that to the extent that this could become a blight on the county, that it is probably in the county's best interest that we do include it.
Well, the county had a whole lot of trash that, when the flood, that one year, even stuff that's been there for a lot longer than the flood. And it's like they had people haul all this stuff down there, so it's still county, county doing it.
You use the word threat. Is that the impression that the commissioners got from this representative was that it was a threat? They were just going to walk out, close the door?
Oh, I had this already known, got in my mind, that's exactly what I had. Yeah, this, we've seen this coming for over six months. They mentioned it last fall, you know, whenever, so it was twenty-one, so we had to get petitions. And I never heard anything back from them, it didn't happen. I knew that they had a line, the mayor of Grant, because he would be named for it by January first, it's going to be county's anyway. And I can't remember the exact threat he made or mechanism he was going to use.
Look, he made a comment that he was going to go, we didn't go yet to pursue this. And he was just going to go in there and tell those officers to resign, quit. He's going to pack the files up and go pay it to the auditor's office and all put on there. And to do with it whenever they want.
Yeah. Without any elected officials or anybody in the place to know, you know, any officer like that, I don't think you do. I really think this, the time is right. It's been something that's probably in the making, a long time coming. What I've seen actually in the last couple of years is some people who have shown a genuine interest in trying to put this together, get something done and done right. Recognizing that they're far behind the involvement, they think they're right. So they actually tried to go about it properly, just walking right. And so I'm actually pleased to see in the last two years that there's been a lot of attempt made to do the right thing in the right way.
It seems to me like the county is really already shoulder these responsibilities anyway.
Yeah, there's a few things in there that need to be tweaked up. Because, you know, we don't have security or lighting on county roads. So utilities, we shut off on the utilities on those lights. And probably, and then it'll come out in comments. You know, give the public a little bit of response. Can't see enough people surfacing to want to say, oh, resurrect Fredericksburg. I mean, it's a proper process. I mean, they say that, and I don't want to see the county dissolve, but it's not. It's changing from being a public, you know, taking some of their city duties and mayor and all that type of stuff. Say council or white, so they just become a common rural town. But again.
What's the body of commissioners thinking about the whole thing? So, I mean, the commissioners. Well, let me do whatever I want. There really hasn't been, I mean, I think those are your personal thoughts. And when you consider the things that we discussed over the last two years, that's, I think that's probably a fair tone that's been elicited because we've had some instances. Or we've had a statement, a divide, and support for whatever reason, whether it's personal landfill being developed or flooding and bringing removal, this is going to go on. Or mowing that has to take place. I mean, those types of things, just generally, you've got to deal with it. But really, there's only been minimal discussion. Certainly no consensus of, I think, established in the commissioners. And I can very much tell by the whole discussion, I guess.
All right, before the county mission, okay.
Before, I, I understand that they're readily willing, probably, to turn over all real property. What about personal property? I mean, I'm talking down to file cabinets, computers, the streetlights, disassemble them. Scrapple or sell them at the county.
Save.
I don't know. On streetlights? Now, security lights are something else, but streetlights, town? I, I don't know where their money has been going. But if there, if there's a laptop or if there's a file cabinet or if there's a brick, if we need to mill up the streets that are on the backside of town that nobody ever uses, there, there's got to be some accountability of what the county's going to end up taking over.
Regardless, I mean, we're still going to be taken over. I mean.
Yeah.
At the, at the last meeting, I, I mean, it's telling that there's no one here tonight. Mr. Burns showed up in a representative capacity at the last meeting, that there was no representative from the town of Fredericksburg. And he requested permission because he's pretty much volunteering his efforts not to show up today. So bringing a lot of running just to be a good citizen from another county. We've been through the process before trying to assist a citizen to this county. Go through the process of certain assistance to elected officials from the town of Fredericksburg. And, but I'm gathering that these people who were stepping up to try to be good citizens and do the right thing and have pretty much burnt themselves out. And regardless of what they do, they're not going to carry out any duties. And if someone wants to impeach them or go in on office, they voluntarily resign. So there, there, there's not a lot we can do. I also know, I was in court, I was here at court one day a few months ago. And it's my understanding there's a fire department that provides services in that area after which they owe money. And this whole scenario was played out in court with Mr. Burns and Joe Stillberg, who signed petitions, who elected officials. They're basically burning the process of solving, there is no money, there isn't a pass, but there's nothing to get. It's my revelation, I'm not confirmed this last two years, but my understanding was that they had not submitted budgets to the state. And as a result, no cash rate was set, and so there's no income. So they have, that's, that's the problem. They have people who are, if that's true, I would say, they're working their duties and not following the.
So the residents of Fredericksburg were paying county rate rather than a town rate? Or they're not paying any taxes?
Well, they were paying the county rate, but they weren't paying the, they didn't have an extra.
Supplemental town portion.
I, you know, in discussion of this in there, you know, and not just for discussion. I mean, personally, I, we need to make a recommendation to the commissioners to put this through deep process, to go again and put it again and that. If there's something that surfaced that we did not see, we need to change.
Let me, let me interject this. We don't have to make our recommendation tonight. We have to make our recommendation no less than ten days prior to the public hearing. We will, we demand, perhaps even yet.
I was going to say, but does the real property, the stipulation by the state is that the real property be conveyed to a public entity?
Correct. I'm not going to fund, like, any stipulation from the state.
Yeah. Not even federal.
We already see federal, we already see federal funding. The stipulation required that it be held up and maintained for public use. And I can't, and this was two years, a couple of years ago when it's subject issue.
With, with the fire department down there being issued in a couple of laws. If they think that they've got money held to.
Yeah, I, I have to look and see if that's ever.
But it wouldn't have a right.
As they know, they can never sell it, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Yeah, barbecue, that was a reference.
Yeah, but yeah, I, I don't know if they have the value, training exercise.
I don't know. So our, our next meeting is what day?
June fourth.
June fourth? I think, I mean, we could.
I'm going to make a motion that we, that we.
Submit a recommendation.
Submit a recommendation to the commissioners.
I'll say.
A permanent recommendation proving.
Proving.
Approving the dissolution. Adam Ford has made that motion, saying by, plain private, it's open for discussion.
Thank you.
It's a habit where you want.
Call for question, be done.
Call for question? No more question? Paid to the vote. All in favor of accepting the dissolution of Fredericksburg? Give that as a recommendation to the commissioners or our county commission? Senator Fongos saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, saying, I shouldn't care. So do, I need to make the signature on that?
Yes, I made the present signature on that. It's just a matter of time.
Okay.
I had it out moments ago.
Rhonda?
Yes.
You want to come on in or get prepared for?
Yeah.
Rhonda's asked to, she presented this at the county council meeting. She's got a program here that she thinks that would help the different committees and organizations to get kind of a common calendar, help the county government step through processes and meetings. I'll turn it over to Rhonda.
Yeah, here's Rhonda.
Here's Rhonda.
Oh, that's bad.
You're starting to learn your equipment more.
A little bit, but it's crooked. It is crooked, but I'm not going, I'm not going to change it. I'm just telling you. Come on now. I'll go pass these out while it gets familiar with itself. This will actually stop the, the video or the voice recording. It freezes that program, which is interesting. Hold on, I need to give you this, okay?
So we can say whatever we want now?
You can say whatever you want now. It's only going to be recorded on the camera where everybody else watches, okay? Yeah, there you go. Okay. And this, this, this sheet is a little bit different than today's at the campus, okay? Because I tried to tailor it just a little bit to you guys. You know, I put Tom's and Travis's name on it, you know, and that kind of thing. You'll find it, you'll find it, you'll find it. Uh-oh, glasses, there we go. Okay, there you go. You guys are right. You want one? Okay. All right. Okay. There we go. All right. Okay, it is, hold on, let me. Come on now, come on. What am I doing? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Connect the community, okay? Um, I've been looking for some way to get the community together. I wanted to find programs or a program that everybody could use, all right? Is simply used, had the ability to let people publish websites, have a calendar, communicate with each other, all of that. And so I asked my sister-in-law, Laura, who's like a super brain. And I said, oh, please, please, is there anything out there? And she said, well, Google apps, okay? And so I explored it and so on and so forth. So here, let's just go ahead and dig out. And this is the intro. Why Google apps? What they cost and how they work? How does a regular website work? Because I'm sneaking in some educational opportunity here, okay? Reasons why you don't have a community account, you know, community website? How this relates to your organization or business, a possible. A possible solution using Google Apps? And why I'm doing this, okay? Google Apps is available to all. If you have a website, if you have an internet connection and a computer, you can open up your own account, you have all kinds of things available to you. Um, no one's gonna say no to you. Google doesn't care, okay? Relatively easy to use, uh, has a good backup on- on information if you have a problem with it. Um, you can always ask it, okay? It's a powerful suite of so- uh, programs. Uh, email, website, uh, documents, spreadsheets, um, and the calendar, which is what I wanna commu- you know, concentrate on a little bit here, okay? Um, it has a consistent program setup. Uh, they update. So, uh, if you're in the program itself, you're not dealing with somebody else, you know, and they're in the program, they have the same set of programs you do. It's always compatible, okay? So if you have a question that you don't wanna ask Google and you wanna ask your neighbor, um, a lot of times, you can just get the answer from them. You see what I'm saying? So you're dealing with the same problems, it's consistent and upgraded all the time. They do a lot of, uh, testing on people, I guess, would be the, uh, a way to do. Um, it's cheap. I did this program, this presentation on my free one. This is a free account through Google, okay? Extends to video support. When you ask Google, they'll give you a video on how to do it, okay? Not just, you know, little words that you have to read, try and understand. It'll say this step, this step, and this is what you need to see. And like, once again, the programs all work together. Once again, the, uh, calendar works together with other accounts. And, uh, um, so we'll go on to that. Now, the whole point is to find a way to allow our community organizations and businesses to become self-sufficient and communicate with each other, both of these, okay? In as simple a way as possible. Once again, I did this with the free account. The free account has email, has, you can get a custom, uh, email address. You maybe have to spend ten dollars on a domain, big whoop, for a year. Not a problem. Or you can sign in under your own email and have your own account that way also. Um, email, calendar, documents, which is a very powerful thing, and then team sites, where you can actually put your own website up. They have templates, it's a program where you don't have to know code, okay? You can always go to the fifty dollar a year one if you want to. That's, you know, you know, if you're into business and all of that kind of stuff, that's opportunities out there. And they use the same setup. It all works together. One of the things about the fifty dollar a year one is that they have asset support. Where you can have asset, you can put in like this room and say, okay, this room is being used on this night, this night, and this night. But, I mean, you can do other things with that too. Okay, how a webpage works, and we're only gonna concentrate on one little characteristic. Um, a webpage is not a piece of paper, you know? When a browser goes out, when you download a page from the web, when the browser, uh, you have code that, okay, this highlighted piece of code tells the browser that it needs an image file, where to go get it, and how big to make it when it loads into the page. And so this is the highlighted piece right here. You can actually take the HTTP, take that line right there, type it into your browser, and you will bring up that- that very image, okay? So, which is really kinda cool, 'cause that's something I uploaded and I did, and the browser went out to go get it from way far away, probably India, I don't know. I have no idea where the browser, the server is. But anyway, the connection is made with the website where the picture is hosted, and you can see the file thing's there. The image is loaded, uploaded into the computer of the- where the browser is, and if everything works right, it shows up on the webpage, okay? It fetches. So we're just gonna keep that in mind, it fetches, okay? How a regular website works. What the webmaster does, writes the website on his computer, his or her computer, and makes all of these files, okay, right here, and loads it up onto the server. Where the server is on twenty-four hours a day and has connection to the outside world. Where all of these little computers go ahead and ask, go to basecandle.com and ask for these files right here. And the server dishes it up in a way that their browsers can understand, okay? So that's just simply that the only way to change the- the website is through the webmaster, you know, on the backside, okay? So, are there any questions? Okay, okay. A community website, we've been talking about it for years, okay? This is me being snarky, and I'm just, I'm gonna just lay it right out there. Um, this is our impression of what a community website is, okay? You've got all these nice little circles and squares, these are businesses and civic organizations and charities. And they give the information to, this is the, uh, you know, webmaster, the angel, and this is the information. And they're turning it across the bridge, okay? This is how we kinda feel about it. There's not really any, you know, turmoil, this is all idealized, lies, and all of that kind of stuff. But in the real world, this is what we have. We have this line of a little bit disgruntled people, we've got not only just one school, we've got three. We've got several individuals, and we've got charities that all bring this information into this poor little webmaster, okay? And, uh, you can get it in an email, this information, you know, we're gonna have a meeting on here, and it's gonna be in this place, and all of that kind of stuff. And using the old way that a website is put up, this is your point of contact. This is the person that has to personally, physically put it on the website, okay? And can sometimes get it wrong, and actually leave somebody out, and have somebody else's feelings hurt, and all of that kind of stuff. So you don't have a really clean way to list where all these meetings are and all of that kind of stuff, okay? You know, the source is not communicating directly with the website, okay? And this is not, this whole situation is not, you know, just for the web. We have right here, um, and I'm gonna say, this is the auditor's one, I kind of revamped the one that I- I gave you and printed off. I didn't have a lot of time today. But you've got, you know, the auditor. I don't know if that's legitimately what the- the government is, the auditor has all the communication responsibilities, but you've got the public, you've got the park boards, you've got land use planning. And all of this information, you've got commissioners and council and tourism board, plus what they have to do in their own job, okay? So, you know, they give, they take in information and they give it out personally, you know? There really isn't a setup where, you know, they can kinda put stuff up on the website, but they have to call up cybercheck and all of this kind of stuff. There really isn't a good way to get a clean line of information. And so, because of way too much information to be handled to follow the law, I mean, and it's not that, it's not, you know, it's not on purpose, there's just so much information to keep the public informed and to keep the boards accountable. We don't have a really good list of who all be, you know, appointed to these boards, what these boards do in the community. Um, and it's not because they're ducking their responsibility, it's just that there's so much information and no really good way to get it out, okay? All right, a possible solution, using Google Calendar, okay? Now, the way Google Calendar, or the way the Google accounts work, is you can sign up. You can use your own email, you can go ahead and buy a domain and have another email or anything similar to that nature. Um, free or ten dollars a year, okay? Depending on what you're looking at. And, uh, you can go to the calendar part of it, you know, they have, like I said, they have a bunch of applications that you can use. But you can go to the calendar app and create a calendar or several, there's no limit. There, you can do several things with it, you can keep it private for your own use. You can make it semi-private, where viewers only see that you are busy, or you can make it public. Um, you can also embed your calendar into a webpage and provide links to, you know, and- and make it a regular webpage where they can see it, or general public. But the main point is that it is your calendar and your account and controlled by you, okay? No one can mess with it unless you want them to. All right. Communication solution, here the cali- the calendars are interactive. You can actually have other calendars listed on your calendar. And you can list on other people's calendar, or businesses, or- or organizations. So it's interchangeable. You just give permission to be allowed, even to just one calendar, or all of them, or however you wanna do it. It's very, you're protected. You don't have to have anybody on it if you don't want to, okay? So what I wanna see, you know, your communication solution, or in other words, this is what I'd like to see for you to do, okay? Is to set up a Google Calendar called Washington County Government. Make it not only public, but embed it in a webpage and link it to your reg- regular site, okay? Ask a variety of boards to open up their own accounts and set up their own calendars, and make sure that they set them as public, okay? Attach these calendars to the government calendars so that when they update their calendars, the government calendar is automatically updated, okay? Does that make sense? Do you guys have a question? Yes, yes.
I get the calendars.
Yes.
Let's hypothetically say, okay, the master calendar, the government calendar, is the county committee, one of the county commissioners are calling the government calendar.
Right, right.
So every board and as many nonprofits or whatever that wanted to would have been linked to this, or, and they would list each other as friends.
Right, or-
And if, then everybody, people would accept and reflect on they seen the calendar. My question is, where does that calendar show up?
It shows up where you want it to show up. It can be embedded in a, uh, a web- a webpage. Now, the calendar can travel. So you can have, uh, the calendar, the main calendar, or however many calendars you want. You know, you don't have to have just a- a government calendar, you can have other calendars. People can interplay with each other anyway. But you have the calendar show up where you want it to show up. You can have a webpage that cycle check builds up. You know, surely I can get them to, I can show them how to do it. But you can also have it so that the government calendar is a link, is embedded in a page that is involved with the same leader. Banner's really interested in this. So when you list, when your- when your organization lists in their calendar, it shows up everywhere, okay? So all of these webpages are going out and fetching this information. So it depends on, you know, you can provide a link and embed a- a- a calendar anywhere you want it to be.
So they could actually go into the current, which is the county, the webpage.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a link that you go in there and put calendars on it.
Right, when you click on it, it get your calendar off.
Well, Rhonda, it was that you mentioned that, and I looked as far as the date for the form, and I couldn't find it and set a link. And I thought, well, Rhonda won't have it, could be in the crowd, you know? The form and the time, and I went to your calendar, you didn't have it either.
Well, sometimes I don't have time.
See, this is the issue I was, yeah, I- I think this is gonna be the issue. Rhonda's different manager's gonna be keeping that thing.
Here's what she's thinking, if anybody has, everybody has a calendar. All it takes is one person putting it out, and it shows up.
And we try to put that all together at the beginning of the year, you know, when our meetings happen, but-
Right.
Should we have a special-
You ever come to call a special meeting? Well, this is something to update that on our calendar.
I mean, I can do it on my phone.
Right. Right, see, and that's the thing. And, you know, when I, you know, I haven't been updating my, 'cause I've been busy, like, working. People don't think I have a job, but I think I do. Okay, so like, I get this smartphone, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this around. Oh, it looks like the train, come this corner, 'cause like, it rains, but it rains outside. Anyway, so here's this coming up, right? You can see right here, you know, it just, sorry, I- I can't, I touched the screen and it- it shows the temperature. Um, all right, it automatically comes up, okay? Mine says Troy, when there's a meeting if I wanna be reminded, okay? See, that's just an automatic thing. It's a smartphone, I just now got it, I paid, I'm pulling amounts to-
I made the down一款, I don't-
I know, you have the same phone that I would rather have, okay? I have one over here.
You can't forget a dollar.
You can't get them. But-
I can tell you, I've been using calendars for a decade at work. And people would use this, um, if it, if, but it's- it's on an individual basis, and if it was linked to the county calendar, which is what you're getting at, but- but really, it's in everybody's interest to update their calendars, because I can't remember what's going on.
Right, and so, yeah, because then what they do is give a list to Sarah, you know? And you just have the list in the office, and no one really knows what it is. Okay, so you can come up, say like, okay, you have a smartphone, 'cause you're a smartphone guy. I've heard Troy mentioned every once in a while. So, you can have it, so you can have a calendar for the government, right? You don't have to have everybody have a smartphone. You can have it so that you are able to list, and whoever's in charge of the calendar is able to list. And so you have a meeting where, oh, you know, can we get this room? You can call it up on your cellphone, and you can look and see if it's, if it's-
Booked.
Empty, booked or empty, okay? So you can, you can leaf through this, I've just put stuff on. You can leaf through this, you guys can touch it, it's okay. Okay, you know, I just didn't wanna-
I didn't know what temperature, you're talking about outside temperature or your-
It's gonna rain, okay, so, yeah, you can see the- the calendar, okay? I'm making it rain again, okay, hold on, hold on, there it is. Hold on, it's not doing it, hold on, okay, okay.
Is it actually raining?
Yes, it rains on my computer. You can touch it, it's okay.
It doesn't fit my pocket, I don't touch it.
Oh, well, okay. And you can touch the thing where it says what temperature it says, just, you know, it's like, I'm so sorry. But I got it because I needed that kind of stuff. But say, but say like Travis, but say like Travis can have a calendar, okay? That shows that he's not in or whatever, and then people can schedule, okay? You don't wanna see the rain, you wanna see the calendar, okay? But you can touch that, and then, you know, day or whatever, just go ahead and touch it.
It's raining out there.
Yeah. We're gonna bring it right this second.
But it feels like rain, it'll do that whenever it thinks it's gonna rain.
Some good's murderin' all my windows.
All right, so, I mean, you know, this is not an absolute. And it- it depends on whether the actual organizations actually list. It takes the- the, all the- the work and splits it up, is what it does. You have this big pile of people looking at you, trying to say, you know, Sarah, it's not you guys, it's Sarah, okay?
You know, Rhonda, you say that, say that the plant commission in there, and we changed the date in there. Am I gonna have to have a special password to go into plant commission, to go in and change the date in there? Or, let's say that somebody wants to change our, and we're only bent with our heads, and go in there and ambush, you know, and change the dates in there, right? I mean, there has to be a certain amount of security down there.
Yeah, it's absolute security. You- you have one or two people that have access to us, just like your Facebook account, just like your email. It's the same thing, you- you took it off, just like your email account. You have an email account, okay? It's the same exact thing. There are, our governments, you know, county governments, and actually this, I think the whole state of Nebraska has changed over to Google Apps for all of their stuff, because the security is up to them.
Is there any, have you seen in Indiana that we're doing that?
I don't know, I don't know. It's all, whatever the video is up, is up on, uh, Google Apps. I don't mind being first. You know, I was kinda pissed off that Nebraska had it before we did it, okay? I'm- I'm telling you, okay? So, so, say like, why is this a good thing? The webmaster only has to load the one webpage, you know, once, but you still get active content. You know, this was aimed at also businesses and stuff like that. This will interact with businesses and all kinds of other organizations. And it refers back, you know, once again, to webpage information. The information comes from the source and can only be changed and uploaded by- The information comes from the source and can only be changed and uploaded by the source, which helps on the, uh, the accountability issue, okay? You know, saying like, you know, somebody asked me to go ahead and, and upload the forums and the, the calendar? Well, that's not really my job and I might get it wrong, okay? It needs to be the, the same leader to put forward better calendar thing.
Well, they, they don't, it's not very good.
I know, I'm aware of this and I, we're, we're not, they're not going to listen to this, but we're going to have discussions about this. If there's a change in the meeting, the organization can update it from anywhere that there is a web connection, okay? Anyone else with or without a Google Calendar can get automatic notifications of a meeting or if a meeting changes on a cellphone, email or and or on the computer. So people who want to be notified will be notified and in the way that they would like to be notified. See, that's the big thing about credibility in the government, you know? Whether you're trying to hide a meeting or not, if people don't think that they can get that information, that's a negative on you. I mean, that's just a fact. That's just a fact. Okay, so, am I done being mean? I think I am. Okay, but, you know, that's the thing. You know, it's not a hundred percent and it's not, you know, you know, why should anybody do it? Because they didn't have to from, you know, up until now. But they're supposed to give an updated, oh, this is what I wanted to give you, okay? One of the characteristics of these Google calendars is that you can print off what meetings are going on in a day, okay? One of the open door law requirements is that you have paper posted either on the door of the meeting or in a designated place, like the permanent office. If this works out, you know, to keep all of these organizations in compliance, if they actually do upload and maintain their, their schedule. All anyone really has to do is, or this would be, this would be a job, I'm so sorry, Sarah, but just download and print off the meetings three days ahead of time. Put it up on a calendar or put it up on a, uh, someplace in, in the courthouse. And then you are abiding by the, the open door laws. You've got a lot of boards that aren't. You didn't. And, you know, there, there was the last mean thing, okay? Do you guys have any questions?
If you go into, where did it count, in a calendar, a plant commission meeting, like, not, so he bought.
Right.
And would if you wanted more detail on that, would it have the agenda on that too?
Yes, you can use the document application with that and, you know, people, it, 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 it will publish it as a webpage. You can upload it to that, you can actually have email lists if there's, you know, notification if you change anything, it'll automatically notify everybody by email that you want to have notified. You can see all of the, the stuff, if somebody clicks on that link, they can see all of that stuff. Yeah, so it does, it is a complete thing. It is, and free, completely free, or ten bucks a year. If, if you have problems with ten bucks a year, I'll help you. Okay? Right, so any, anything else? Anything else? Okay, why I'm doing this. And, and the reason I put my motivation in the backside because I have people think that I'm doing this for some weird, bizarre reason, like I want to read their minds or something similar of that nature. I'm not employed by Google, it's just, it's just a really cool thing and I think it would be a very, a big bonus for the community. But, you know, I'd like to see businesses, organizations use these free tools to benefit themselves in the community. When you are linked to the internet, when you have this power over your own account and you can list on the internet, you can put a PayPal button on, on these sites, you can, you know, commit commerce online without having to ask anybody, okay? That's power, that's real power, okay? Have your own communications set up, you know? Documentation, you can act like one of the big boys even though you're not, this is real power. Good government, working on this for six years, a little bit tired. Good government, that's one of the other motivations. And I would like to really see a real community website. You know, I would like to see these calendars, you know, you don't have to have just one major calendar, you can have several calendars. And you can have it different places, or you can have just a website like business or whatever, you know, a list of calendars.
Look, so put example, on the Washington County website, there's a, there's a tab for the plant commission.
Right.
You can put that in on a webpage, it would be on a calendar.
Right.
It would be a go-to webpage, so I can see what the schedule is in Washington County.
Why can't you just get on the website and do that now? They're not interactive.
They're not interactive. You actually have to talk to the webmaster.
Why do they need to be? So that you don't have.
They don't need to be, but it would be, it would be, the community can go to one stop, you know, one stop shop. The community can go to one place and find out what all the meetings are going on, you know, and when they are and what, instead of trying to go to fourteen different websites to check on meeting dates, they can go to one location, we're going to find out. And then, and there's, if I understand right, because this is all new to me.
Right.
There's also some added bonuses, that's one bonus, and that's for community benefit.
Right.
From Scottsdale, I'm, you know, my initial thought was, well, we are already doing this, but we're doing it through a webmaster. We have to do this on a web, and the benefit of this is we can do it on our own, not through a webmaster.
Right.
And then another benefit is there's all kinds of other tools people will live with. There's all kinds of tools that go along with it that are really handy and useful that can, that we can use to be more efficient.
Andy, Andy's got.
It was legal.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the, the, the thing is with what she's talking about, there can be a couple of designated people on the plant, plant commission that have access to the calendar. And you can go in there and change it, you don't need to call who is the best website now.
Neil's, the cyber tech.
Right, cyber tech, to get it done now. We can go in there and change the Google calendar, which does a link to the calendar on the website.
I understand, I agree, I'm nothing. I guess what I'm saying, you know, I always have to get on email, truth is different. You have to get on, is this another one I'm going to have to do?
You can, if you want to have your own account, you can just list your own email. You don't have to buy anything, you just have your own email, it doesn't have to be a Google email.
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm saying a potential listener here.
Okay.
I think he's talking at a personal level and you're responding at a group level. You're not talking about us, did you get our own individual?
You can do that if you want to.
But it's, that's, that's.
It's not necessary.
Yeah, we did, as a basic premise, you're just, you just like to see every organization.
Yeah, the, the, the organization of the plant commission would have the calendar.
Right.
And if we wanted to tap in, we could, and we could receive, the plant commission, the commissioners, the council and all these offices or whatever, we could receive updates and notifications about if we did one, we wouldn't get them, if we did one, we could get them, they could live on it or email, it could come by text message, it could come by all kinds of methods. And we are in control individually of how we want to receive any changes or updates, but we don't have to receive any of them. You, and none of us individually have to do anything. As a board, we would have to designate one, and it should be the Republican president to, or the secretary, or the plant commissioner to, to update this and have access to this.
This is more for the public.
It's more for the individuals.
Yeah, it really is.
But it, it wouldn't be a bad tool to have individually because you can go, with a quick, quick trip to the county website, you can go and verify meeting dates at times.
Right.
That's why it would be useful to all of us individually.
And the updates would get done quicker because they're done by, it comes from a horse's mouth.
Right.
We do them that moment, like, while we're talking about it, rather than waiting to contact the webmaster and like he or she's available to get to it, to update it, to make a change or whatever. A lot of things would be quicker.
For example, we have a meeting that I, the webmaster, I know.
Right.
We could do it right there.
Yeah, we could be sitting here and do it every, every.
We have a change, we use it there.
One thing, one thing I will mention, and it probably won't fly because you've got so many different entities you need to work with, and having that resources ability would be incredibly useful. Because I deal with that daily, you need to be able to know if you're scheduling a meeting and whoever's the responsible party is scheduling the meeting. They need to be able to see when a venue is available.
Well, I know, it's the extension really, you know, we have, we had some conflict, I suppose, about scheduling, we have to put that, you know, uh, you know, with that meeting, you know, but. I, I can see some comes in, what I see is that a lot of good ideas don't get pursued and, you know, the information, it's only as good as the people that are putting it in and keeping it.
Right.
And if our webpage, our information, and that we have a plant commission that sits my stable right now, that'll be. We put our calendar in there, beginning of the year, when we started, uh, actually in January, but nothing in our calendar has changed, you know, on that night. We do have one change, and come out to, we have one meeting we have to change, make because it's scheduled. Look here, so the city was, well, we could probably leave it at two, in a perfect world.
Right.
But unless, you know, unless everybody buys into it, they change their calendars or meeting places, that's what.
Well, it'll work, it'll work to some extent. And that's the thing, that's why I'm starting now. This is a year-long process. And the thing of it is too, I, I, okay, you know, the last thing, I'm going to write about this. If you guys decide not to do it, it's no sweat off my ass. This is not really my project. I'm going to write about it and write about how this, this works or doesn't work. And if this presentation doesn't work and it doesn't get, you know, and it may not be, uh, a, a good thing for you or you may find something else, that's why I'm doing it, okay? Because we're not the only community that this could be a benefit to, okay? You see what I'm saying? This is not, I'm denying Rhonda the project, I, this is not my thing, okay? I'm just providing an, a, a, a line of information and a way to deal with something. And if you guys take it or not, that's up to you. You, you succeed or fail on your own, if this is a project that you want to go ahead and do. In part, as a government entity, you guys need to have communication, you need to have, uh, uh, you know, uh, clarity, or what is it, what is it next? Open door law, transparency, yeah, transparency and accountability. This is an easy way to do it. You guys are not bad. As far as like, abiding by the law, you guys are not bad. The open door laws, you have your, your meetings listed and all that kind of stuff. There are groups that don't. Because there's no real good way for them to do this, okay? And, uh, this may not be for you and if you, you think the whole project would be a failure, it's not really a failure if, if one person or one group doesn't abide by it or doesn't, you know, or several groups. We're just going to see where this goes. And if this is a viable thing for one group, if you guys want to take it up later, that's up to you. You see what I'm saying?
Part of it, like the council and commissioner have got executive stations that they may not be able to post until two days prior to know exactly what they are going to be talking about. But when they get ready to put, put them in, when they type them up, they can just go ahead and post it to their calendar at the same time they hit print to put one on the door. I mean, that would help them and that would be their update like two days prior when they do have their executive station staff, I mean, it wouldn't have to be that much extra work to do, say post and then print to do what you're already doing normally. You, you may have it really easy, especially in here because like I said, most of your meetings may not even change. Unless you do want to post, uh, and say, okay, here's the agenda that Travis is bringing in, you know, forty-eight hours prior like they're supposed to be to, you know, for a special chicken house situation or whatever comes up, you may not have to update once every three months after your beginning of the year schedule goes online.
Well, for us, the, the things that would change to your, your subgroups and things.
Well, and you would be listed in one place. If someone's looking for you, you would be listed in one place, you would have the documents right there. You guys are a high tension group. You're dealing with people's property. The more transparent you can be, the more user friendly you can be, that benefits you and adds to your credibility. Because you guys are deciding on some pretty heavy things, people's property and how they can use it. The more clarity you have, the more transparency you have, the more credibility you have. The more credibility you have, the better you can do your job. Sure, they can go to the website and go ahead and tap on your, your old site and you have the line of, uh, meetings down there. You know, before you had like at six thirty, seven, it was confusing and all that kind of stuff. But if it was on a calendar where people could see it and see where your meeting is in comparison to the other meetings, in a format that they can understand, that adds to your credibility.
Well, Rhonda, thank you for your presentation. I want the commission to kind of look at this as a thought process and see what you can do. I mean, and it will take from every one of the, uh, the different committees, appoint person to be able to do that. Travis and I try to correspond, you know, as far as our meeting times and our agendas, you know, and then I mass mail it out there, an email for comments and stuff. And I will say that I'm glad that you guys are very responsive as far as playing back and that could have been acknowledgement of receiving those, uh, things in there. I can see some, I can see a lot of different organizations, even the city assemblies also.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much for that, Rhonda, in that, so. It is, uh, five after nine, I appreciate everybody's time. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up before the plant commission? Or is anybody from the audience, Travis, do you have anything that you need to bring forth to us on that? Max, and that, so. If not, I am to take a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, private, I'm making a motion, do I have a second? Add it to four, thank you very much. All with a favor, stand up.